All right, I will call to order the public council meeting on January 24th at 7:30 PM. First on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Alder Allen?
Present.
Alder Radafrada?
Yes.
Ald Alder Gerhard?
Here.
Alder Herbs?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor?
All right, thank you. All right, uh, public appearances, non-genue items, no appointments. I do not have anything, so seeing nothing, I will move on to consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Jay to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. Anything people want to do separately on the consent agenda? Seeing nothing? All in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next up, the mister's report.
Good evening, everyone. Got a few events that I'll cover first. Fitchburg Chamber has a biz after-hours event tomorrow, 4:00 PM at Ollies, uh, which is the former Liliana's on McKee Road. The annual employee luncheon had to be postponed in December due to inclement weather, and that has been rescheduled for Thursday at 12:00 noon in the O'Call Room at Community Center. The Finance Committee will be holding a special meeting, uh, next week, February 1st at 6:00 PM. That'll be to discuss the ARPA and TID closure investment plan. The Parks Commission, or I'm sorry, the Parks Department will be hosting an open house, uh, for the Stoner Prairie Park planning process. It's set for, I believe it's February 8th at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. The Fire Department recently hosted an event at the, uh, what their main location there on Lacy Road, uh, to collect firefighting foam that contained PIFAs in it. And approximately nine, uh, fire departments, uh, brought their PIFAs there for collection by an environmental disposal company, and, uh, the total amount collected was over a thousand gallons of firefighting foam that, uh, contained PIFAs. So I can, uh, report that our Fire Department here in Fitchburg currently does not have any firefighting foam with PIFAs in it any longer. Uh, ballots for the February primary, uh, are going to be mailed on January 31st. We have approximately 1,200 ballots requested so far. And in-person absentee ballot, uh, ballot voting will begin February 7th through February 16th from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM on weekdays. And the final absentee in-person voting opportunity is February 17th from 7:30 to 5:00 PM. And all of that information is out on our website. And then, uh, the final item I have is last, uh, council meeting, we heard from some residents of the Swan Creek Uptown Crossing neighborhood, uh, about speed concerns on Sine Road. And, uh, I want to say that staff took a look at the Sine Road reconstruction project, and as part of that project, we do have permanent speed display signs, uh, included in the reconstruction project. So we went ahead and ordered, uh, those two, uh, speed display signs so that we can put them up on a temporary basis, uh, before the reconstruction pro- uh, project, easy for me to say, next year. Uh, there currently are two smaller portable speed display signs that have been installed out on Sine Road currently. Uh, those are ones that move throughout the city, and, um, we'll be replacing those in the next couple of weeks with these newer, larger signs that will ultimately be permanently installed once the Sine Road, uh, is reconstructed. So I just wanted to report that to council. Any questions?
Yeah, I had also received some communications from residents, and I was gonna do this under district report, but might as well do it now. Um, we, I talked with Public Works and they, uh, put some, uh, flashing yellow lights on those signposts as well to kind of draw more attention. Those speed signs that we have are really small. They're, you know, they're probably like 18-inch by 18-inch. Uh, so we put the additional lights on there to help with that, so hopefully, um, that will slow people down a little bit.
Gabriel?
Is there any update about the Fitchburg Star?
So you should look for a memo coming from me for, uh, any of the options that the council might wish to consider related to the Star and/or other outreach avenues, uh, next month for council consideration.
All right, seeing nothing else, we can go on to Plan Commission. Randy?
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, under Plan Commission, motion, motion to approve Resolution R-19-23, CS-2492-23, approving certified survey map request, CS-2492-23, by Teresa Hansen and Robert Talcazar, agent for Lois Guss, to approve a CSM, creating a farm consolidation to allow existing residents to be subdivided on its own parcel with property associated with 5942 County Road M.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
Did Ag and Rural Affairs approve?
Ag and Rural Affairs approved.
All right, and what's this about?
Well, before I go forward, both, I should point out that the resolution and the upcoming, um, ordinance for rezoning are, are tied together, so. Uh, what's taking place here is that this proposal is to, is subdividing an existing single-family, residential structure onto its own parcel. Uh, the new parcel will be rezoned from, uh, exclusive agricultural to rural density. And then the, uh, proposal also includes consolidating four existing agricultural tracks into one, one farm, uh, proposed, which will, will stay AX, AX zoning, so.
And it follows all of our guidelines and rules for agricultural zoning and doing divisions?
Very, yes, true.
Any questions at all on this one? All right, seeing nothing, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, nay? That one's approved. Next one?
All right. Motion to approve Resolution R-20-23, which is CDP-2495-23, approving comprehensive development.
Don't, don't, you skipped number two.
I skipped number two.
The ordinance.
I did. I wanted to push them both together, which they are, but. Motion to approve Ordinance 2023-0-02, RZ-2493-23, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request, RZ-2493-23, by Teresa Hansen and Robert Tal- Talzak, agent for Lois Guss, to rezon property from AX, which is exclusive agricultural, to RR, rural density, to subdivide an existing home from an agr- agricultural tract onto its own parcel associated with 5942 County Highway M.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
Did Ag and Rural Affairs approve?
Ag and Rural approved.
Same project as the last one, right?
Same project, just rezoning.
All right. Any questions, Jay?
Well, first of all, thank you for having these in the right order. And second, the wording on this is incorrect. It should be rural residential, not rural density.
Oh, yeah. RR.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. And, Randy, are you okay with the, uh, friendly amendment?
Yes.
And Jay, as your second. All right, so that typo we will fix. Any other questions going forward? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one, Randy?
Motion to approve Resolution R-20-23, formerly D- CDP-2495-23, approving comprehensive development plan amendment. CDP-2495-23, by Robert Shea, agent for Orchard Point Development Company, Inc., to amend a comprehensive development plan to allow a senior housing project in the Orchard Point Development.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
All right, and what's this one about?
Uh, the applicant is proposing, uh, a 100, 109-unit senior living housing development, uh, which is including, uh, 81 assisted living units, uh, 28 memory care units, and on the proposed parcel, um. I think originally, this particular parcel, if I'm using the correct terminology, which is immediately west of, um, if you're immediately west of Limestone, south of the Target, east of, um, Quarry Ridge, if I'm not mistaken, um, it was originally, uh, approved for retail, and so they would like to basically change it to residential. You want to comment on that as well? I mean, you?
Yeah, that was accurate. Uh, so, and they think that actually it works really well with the kind of luxury senior living that's right behind it, around it, kind of.
Correct.
Um, in fact, you know, they could see one, uh, one of the, you know, someone in the couple needs the assisted living. They could actually go there while the spouse continues to live in the other one.
Mm-hmm.
So they're like, it's a good compliment to what is there right now.
I think it fills that gap. So it's gonna be very odd to throw some retail in between two retail, or two, two residential.
Any questions on this one? Right behind Super Target, so they had that really, that really, uh, kind of luxury senior living, that big complex.
Yeah.
There's some land actually right in front of it.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah, it's that lot right there, across the street from the workforce housing that JT Klein did as well. That's on the other side of, of, uh, Fitchrona. I think the Limestone.
And that, um, development that is already there is okay with this one coming?
Yeah, they think it's a good compliment because they're kind of just like, kind of luxury senior, and this is assisted living and memory care, which they don't do.
Okay.
All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else on Plan Commission?
Uh, no, nothing else.
All right, Public Works, anything, Dave?
No, we didn't. Uh, our meeting was canceled. Uh, we're meeting again on the 6th.
All right, Park Commission?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, Library Board?
Uh, we, uh, talked at great length, uh, our last couple of meetings about the public display, uh, area. The library has this area, this cabinet where you can have public displays. Um, and it's been used, I guess, a few times by some schools and, uh, some other community groups. So the, there's been a process over the last, probably six months of trying to develop a policy for what can be displayed there. And after discussing that with the city attorney, it appears that it's really difficult for us to write a policy that would prevent, um, certain things from going in there that would not be appealing to the users of our library. So the decision has simply been made to, uh, discontinue using it as a public display area. So we wrestled with the, with the policy for the last few months, and it was just decided we're gonna not wrestle anymore and do away with it, so. Um, it had, it had received so little usage from, uh, from the community anyway, since the library's open, that, um, it's not really gonna be inconveniencing anybody, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Najin Mall?
Uh, I move approval of Resolution R-224-22.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Commissioner Najin Mall approve this?
Yes, they did.
Did Finance approve it?
Finance approved.
All right, see, we got another typo there. Uh, it's, Dave, do you want to explain what this is?
Yeah, so this, we have a yearly, this is something that comes up every year. We, uh, the county provides funding for a number of the things in our, in our senior center, um, you know, Meals on Wheels, some transportation, uh, I believe so, some of the social work services. So this is, um, this is a yearly thing, and I, I believe we had a, we've had a decent, uh, decent increase in what the county is, you know, is providing this year for, for this contract.
I believe they increased it 9%, which is a total of 140,000-ish that we're getting. All right, we use that for meals and a number of other things for the senior center. Any questions at all or comments? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else, Dave?
Uh, I'll just, uh, just give a quick update. I think you're all aware, our, uh, food service through Little John's was discontinued, so, uh, the, the center is working very hard. Local vendors providing, uh, providing, they, they wanted to, some people wanted them to close to, uh, meals, and, and Jill has fought hard, and, and they have found sources to keep, keep going here until the county can get another contractor. Senior Center is, uh, directly paying for the, uh, the planning work done for the, uh, the patio. And we expect to go out for bid on that shortly, and, uh, I think you've saw in, in the mayor's plan, the, uh, Jill submitted, uh, some, for the ARPA money, uh, remodel expansion of our, our kitchen and a second upgrade, uh, to the AV equipment, uh, so a little out of order, but, uh, I thought it was a good place to throw in that report.
All right, thank you. RCC?
No report.
All right, what about TTC?
Uh, TTC, we met on January 12th, um, and it was Bill Walkie's last meeting, I think ever, um, for public meetings, anyway. Um, the, we just looked at the Madison Metro. They have draft, um, proposals for the new bus stops that are going up for all the routes that have been changed, um, so they kind of gave us a first view at that. And then, we also took a look, I brought up, we had discussed at the last meeting about bus stops that are being removed, because obviously with the routes changing, quite a lot of bus stops are being removed. I did note that all of the stops along McKee Road, that Route 75 stops out in Fitchburg, seemed to be on the list for removal, but that route, throughout all the process was not, there was no indication that that route was being touched. So, uh, we're gonna bring that up with Metro and figure out what's going on with that, if that's some sort of miscommunication, and if it is not, then that's a conversation that we're gonna need to have, because that route was not part of any of the public discussion, um, with whether or not we should remove it, and none of the people that use that route were notified, so. So that's, I just wanted to flag that for the council. Hopefully, that's just a misunderstanding. We did talk a little bit about the Intercity Transit Feasibility Study that we approved right at the end of last year. If you recall, we, we put $25,000 in, in, um, staff vacancy funding toward it. We did, were notified by one of our former transportation engineers that there is a Wisconsin Department of Transportation grant that potentially would be a good fit for it, a design grant, um, so we're gonna look into potentially applying for that to see if we can expand that study even further, so, uh, so more to come on that. Bill gave us an update on the Sine Road construction. As many of you probably know, it was wrapped for the year, uh, but will begin again in April. Um, and I think we're all familiar, we're gonna do half this year and half the following year. And then there's also a lot of design going on for the McCoy Road intersection where McCoy hits Sine. Um, there's gonna be a signalized intersection going forward, and they had to do some, they're gonna have to do some reworking of the bike path, uh, in that area, too. In terms of Lacy Road reconstruction, the West Lacy Road, the final design plans, I believe, have, were done sometime between that meeting and this meeting, um, and I believe it's gonna go out to bid very soon, so we should see some movement on that very soon. Bill estimated that will, for council consideration time in March, um, was the goal. Fitchrona, um, there's some early discussions about design for negotiating a contract to, to, you know, rebuild that road. Obviously, the whole Goose Lake, uh, issue is also gonna have to be dealt with simultaneously, so, um, there's a lot going on there, but that's in the works for the future. And that's, uh, the full report for TTC.
All right, thank you. Seda?
Our next meeting is Thursday, January 26th at 7:00 AM.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs?
Uh, we met last Tuesday, yeah, the 17th, and we discussed several things. One was the, uh, the, uh, CSM and the rezone that we just voted on. Uh, but then the, the second part of the meeting was discussion of the annual, Ag and Rural Affairs meeting, which will be held at Four Winds, and I believe that date is February 21st. And it's the annual meeting, and then we will adjourn, and there will be a Merrill Forum after.
All right, thank you. EMS?
Um, a couple of things that are new with EMS. Um, they got, um, they're learning, they got some new, um, IV pumps, and I believe it's either an ATV or a UTV. They got a new, new one of those, so that's kind of exciting for them. And, um, we also came to an agreement for the bargaining, so that's done. So that's, that's all we got.
All right, thank you. Bike Committee?
Um, our next meeting is on the 7th. Um, also, the, um, Bike Committee recently, um, submitted their application for the, um, bike status, so hopefully we should be able to get Gold Status. Uh, kudos to the committee for their hard work so far.
All right, thank you. Tree Advisory?
Uh, our next meeting is, um, next week or in two weeks, absolutely, yeah.
All right, Landmarks Preservation?
Um, we have not met.
All right, Housing Advisory?
Um, no update since the last meeting.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods?
Oh, we have stuff. It's exciting. So we, uh, we opened the, uh, application process for the Healthy Neighborhoods grants, um, and for anybody who's out there watching, uh, if you, uh, or a group that you know, uh, is interested in putting on a program that would help one of our priority neighborhoods, uh, the application process is open. It goes through February, uh, 22nd. So the types of programs we're looking at are things that would include youth mentoring, youth education, adult education, workforce development, uh, food security, and neighborhood community building and engagement. So, uh, the grants, uh, are up to $15,000 each, and, um, you know, these are neighborhoods that need some help, and we, we know that there are organizations out there that can meet some of these needs, so, uh, please get applications in so that we can, uh, work on this, get awards out to you, and we can, um, start, uh, interacting more with our, with our needy neighborhoods.
All right, thank you. Finance?
Moving on to Finance. Motion to approve Resolution R-06-23, authorizing amendments to $75 million, City of Fitchburg, Wisconsin Midwestern Disaster Area Revenue Bond Series 2011. Uh, Promega Corporation Project issued on November 3rd, 2011.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and what, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this?
Well, uh, a little background information, Promega is refinancing for the third time the revenue bonds that the city authorized in 2011, and I think they amended in 2014 and 2019. Uh, this requires the council approve, requires council approval as a matter of administrative procedure only. Uh, this debt does not count toward the city's gold debt capacity, bank qualified limits, or arbitrage exemptions applicable to the city's financing. Uh, the city has no liability for the payment on the bonds. The city's special, uh, issuers, council reviewed the documents and has no, not identified any concerns. It's really more of a housekeeping matter than anything else.
All right, any questions or comments? We've all done this before, too, with this.
Right.
All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, say nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else for Finance?
Uh, no, nothing else. Thank you.
All right, Personnel?
I'll start with the resolutions. Uh, I move approval of Resolution R-0723, approving the Juneteenth MOU for police and fire.
Second.
Signed by Julia. Did Personnel approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this one about?
Uh, we approved Juneteenth as a city holiday, an official city holiday, which includes a day off for city staff. Um, this MOU, uh, extends that to our, um, police and fire.
All right, any questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, say nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
I move approval of Resolution R-0823, approving the bilingual incentive pay MOU for police and fire.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Personnel approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this one?
This is something we were discussing for a while, but we included in the, in the budget for this year, a bi, a 50-cent-per-hour bilingual pay incentive for any, um, person in the city, or any city staffer that, that speaks Spanish, Hmong, or American Sign Language, and, and passes exams to prove that they have that, um, that skill. And this is so that we can extend that pay incentive to police and fire. It is, it already exists for, for current city staff. And my understanding is that the company that we're contracting to, uh, do the testing has been selected, and people can start testing probably by the end of the month.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And anyone opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved. Next?
I move approval of Resolution R-0923, approving the overtime MOU for the police union.
Signed by Julia. Did Personnel approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this about?
Yeah, this is, uh, updating language in the contract for the police union. The way that, uh, the police union, or the police department has always dealt with overtime pay was not properly reflected in the contract, so we're kind of fixing that issue. Um, it was a difference between hours worked and hours paid. So really, there's no policy change. It's just updating the contract so that what's being done currently in the department is what the union contract says.
All right, any questions or comments? I believe this also matches what the Fire Department does now. Is that all they're?
It's a little different, yeah.
All right, never mind, never mind, never mind. All right, let's just vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. One more.
I move approval of Resolution R-1023, approving the updated language in the lateral transfer program in an MOU with the police union.
Second.
Signed by Randy. Did Personnel approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this one about?
The lateral transfer program in the police department is so that when, uh, we hire a police officer that has experience in other departments, some of the benefits that they accrued in that old department carry over into our new department, so that things like sick time, vacation time, and even pay increases. We've had a lateral transfer program since 2018, um, but we're improving on it so that it, uh, is kind of basically, if you transfer, you're not losing any benefits by transferring to help us recruit people from other departments, um, experienced officers from the departments. Uh, the other thing that this, this policy does is it, um, retroactively extends those benefit changes to any lateral transfers that have happened in the past few years, uh, including one person before 2018, that if they were hired after this policy goes into place, they would have those benefits, so we're retroactively applying those benefits, not back pay, just, um, just those extended benefits. And this does have a cost, um, but that was, that cost about, about $30,000, but that was included in the 2023 budget.
All right, questions or comments at all? I should, Chief Morales, I'm sorry, I should have probably asked you if you had any comments on any of these. I, I do want to at least offer that to you if you want to add anything.
No, I think they were, uh, pretty well explained. Uh, the only thing that, uh, we did discuss in more detail was the, uh, lateral transfer MOU, and, uh, just, uh, with the short staffing, uh, issues going on with law enforcement agencies throughout, uh, the state and, and country, it's almost like, uh, it's, uh, Robin Peter to pay Paul. Uh, now, um, I'm not in favor of doing, uh, uh, like signing bonuses to get people out here, although we're losing people for those signing bonuses. What I like to do, and what this MOU is, uh, is indicating, is, uh, Fitchburg was already hiring lateral transfers before I got here. We had at least three officers that have 10-plus years of law enforcement experience, and they were not, uh, being paid appropriately, appropriately. This MOU will help in, in bringing them up to the proper levels of pay that they, uh, deserve for the years of service that they have, and it will help retain their, uh, their services here with the City of Fitchburg. So, uh, that would accommodate them and accommodate other officers that we, uh, that we hire with more than three years of law enforcement experience.
All right, any other questions or comments at all? Seeing none, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Amin opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else for Personnel?
Uh, yeah, we actually had quite a busy, busy meeting back on, um, January 11th, so gonna do, give you some updates. Uh, we apply, approved a position description and classification for the Applications and Systems Administrator. It's an IT position that we approved in the 2023 budget, so that is now live on the website for hiring. We also approved a position description and classification for the accountant position that was included in the budget, so that is out. Those are both brand-new positions for 2023. Um, we have, we had, we approved some pay raises and promotions for several employees, um, including our Public Works maintenance worker and mechanic, um, our human resources specialist, um, Amy Tracy is now the Human Resources Generalist, and then our, our Human Resources Manager, former Human Resources Manager, Sarah Olson, is now the Human Resources Director to reflect, um, her current workload. So that was a nice, exciting, uh, votes there. We also approved the contract for the organizational review and staffing study, so that will, um, start the process. Has it already begun, or are we?
Kickoff meeting is Friday.
Okay, so we're gonna get that going, and I believe that we're, we're potentially gonna have results from that, um, middle of the year so that we can plan for 2024 using that, that study. Um, so that's a really exciting process. I believe the, the plan is for the Alders to be involved in that process, um, at some point, so we probably will be contacted about that. And there also will be some engagement, uh, from some of the committees as well, so it'll be a full-spectrum, um, study. And then, we approved a whole bunch of employee handbook updates, uh, including update for Juneteenth, update for the bilingual pay incentive, um, which we heard about for earlier. Um, also the overtime changes that we talked about for the police union MOU. Those were ex- MOU, those were extended to other positions in the police department that are not represented, specifically the police sergeants and dispatchers, because they have that same scheduling restriction. So we wanted to extend it to them as well. And we also added a trainee designation in the handbook. And so, as you all know, we've had a really challenging time recruiting some positions. And Sarah has been doing all the work she can to think about how we can, how we can continue to do that. So one of the new potential solutions is if a position might be trainable, where instead of hiring somebody with, you know, five years of experience as an engineer, maybe we hire someone right out, right out of school, and we train them for a while. And then we, so it's a training designation that would have them at a slightly lower pay grade. They would be trained on a training plan for a year, and then we would promote them up to the standard pay grade and the position, you know, assuming that they meet all the requirements. So it's a potential tool that we might use this year or future years, just to see, hopefully, we can get somebody in these positions rather than having them vacant because of lack of a, of a minimum requirement. Chad?
Yeah, I'll just add, we actually have used a training, trainee designation already with our engineering technician posting. So that just went out within the last week after the Personnel Committee meeting. So that's been a challenge for us to fill that position. So we're already utilizing that recently approved change. So thank you.
And that's all.
Dave, go ahead.
Gabriella and Chad, does it make sense to be adding a bunch of positions when we're going, before we do our study? I'm sorry for asking, but I think the question needs to be asked.
Yeah, these are all approved in the budget. I mean, I understand the thought there, but I think that we understand, actually, we need these positions and a lot more. And that plan is really kind of looking long-term. We know these positions are needed for a lot of different reasons. And so, I mean, I think it's a good question to ask, but I do think that the study will say that these positions are only needed, but, you know, as we continue to grow, there's going to be a lot more need out there.
I, I will note, too, so these two positions in particular, we had some discussion about the benefit to the city, the Applications and Systems Administrator, is someone, you know, we have that OpenGov software that has all this possibility in terms of streamlining city operations and also the interaction with the public. That's all very complicated to administer, especially for staff that are already overburdened. So with that position, we'll be able to roll out a lot of those modules in OpenGov and make things more efficient for everybody and also for the public. And then also, we're planning to eventually, hopefully near term, buy a new financial software, which obviously has a lot of implications about rolling that out. So that person will be able to help with that. So there's a lot of, I guess, efficiencies that will be created by adding that position in particular. And then also with the new accountant position, that person will kind of be, I don't know if this, I think it's accurate to say kind of Misty's number two. And they'll be trained, they're kind of like, almost like a finance director in training. That person could go on and become a finance director in another city. And so it'll create a lot of support for Misty during these complicated processes, and also redundancy for the department. Because, you know, Misty is such a linchpin, that if we have somebody that's trained on all the things that she does, that creates a lot of safety and, for, for the future. So I think both of these in particular are really, really going to be good for the staff and potentially make things more efficient and free up time.
And I'll just add, in regards to the Finance Department in particular, I think it's been over 20 years since a full-time position had been added in the Finance Department. So I think we can all agree that the city has changed dramatically in its operations and, and so forth in 20-plus years.
All right. Moving along. Public Safety, Dave?
Our meeting was canceled. We had no agenda items, so.
All right. Sounds good. No finished business, a little bit of direct referrals. Looks like this first one is Finance. Randy, do you want to do that?
Uh, yes. Motion to approve Resolution R-13-23 Police Department Vehicle Purchases.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right. And would you like to speak to this, or would you like Chief to?
Well, since the Chief is on, otherwise I'll, I'll speak to it, so.
Chief, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. The police department was approved in 20, for the 23, 23 CIP budget to purchase five replacement vehicles. Those are, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Those were five, four police interceptors that were running into some issues with the state contract holders. They're unable to take orders. They cut off orders for the 2023 year back in September. And that's, this is basically a supply and demand. This is not the first time that we've come up here to ask to do a direct referral. In addition to that, I think other departments are struggling with it as well. We are informed that Kaiser Ford ordered, I misspoke in the earlier meeting, they ordered five additional vehicles that should be coming in this year. And we would be able to purchase those when they're in. So we're looking at making a direct purchase with Kaiser Ford versus the state contractor because they're unable to produce the vehicles for the 2023 year.
All right. Any, Jay?
Yeah, what is, what's the price difference between what we would have paid under the state contract and buying them directly from Kaiser?
They're matching the, the state contract.
Oh, okay. Great.
All right. Anything else? All right. Seeing nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved. All right, next one. Randy, this looks like another Finance one.
All right. Motion to approve Resolution R-17-23 authorizing the submittal of an application to the Community Development Investment Vibrant Spaces Grant Program.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right. Would you like to speak to this? Or it looks like Brad might be on if you'd like him to speak to this as well.
Yeah, if Brad, since Brad is here. Otherwise, I'll speak to it. Brad?
Sure. So this is a grant application that I am hoping to apply for. The grants are amounts between $25,000 and $50,000. It's a WDC program, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. And this would be to go towards the construction of the, the hub Phase One project. So the grant would go toward, not the building, but it would go towards likely some of the equipment and, and site prep work that would go in the park. And the, the, we have plenty of match. It's a, it's a one-to-one match, matching grant program, and the, and the project's large enough that there, there would be no problem meeting that match. So I'm here to answer any questions, if there are any.
All right. I like free money. Any questions or comments at all?
I'll just add one.
Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
Thank you, Brad, for the description. I'll just add that the grant requires council resolution in support of the application. So that's why it's here at council this evening.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds good. Seeing nothing else? We can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved. And I need someone to postpone this next one. They had asked us to postpone this, and they'll come back in a future item. Gabriel, go for it.
I'll move to postpone the action on claim for Randy Steinhauer.
Second.
Signed by Rand.
To February 14th.
February 14th.
Mr. Murray, just a point of order on this item. Mr. Steinhauer does a significant amount of business with my company. So when this comes up for discussion, I'll be abstaining from any discussion on it.
Great. All right. So I heard Randy seconded the postponement to February 14th. All in favor of postponing? Say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? And then abstentions?
Yes, please record in the minutes that Alder Allen did not vote.
Alder Allen is abstaining. Perfect. That is postponed. All right. My reports, two things. One, I think last meeting Chad mentioned, our new Public Works Director is starting, and they, and he started yesterday, actually. So if you're in City Hall, if you want to stop up and say hi to Tim, he has lots to learn, but he's jumped in. And so it's exciting to have him on board. And the only other thing I want to talk about, as you know, you got the email, the ARPA TID budget is out right now. And so you can look through that. And there's a meeting next Wednesday, I believe, the first, to go through those, ask questions. I, a couple of things that I'll say about that. I, looking at this, first updated a lot of numbers from last year. There's a lot of things that the prices went up, probably no surprise. Some of them very significantly, like McKee Park Tennis Courts, those I think tripled in cost. And so, you know, those things all happened. There's a few other projects that staff asked to put on there. I didn't add anything personally, anything that might be added is kind of, came from staff. I think there's a couple of things that took out because they were not one-time costs. And this ARPA TID stuff, like we talked about last year, needed to be one-time costs. There's some things added that are not, they had ongoing costs. And with doing all that, we're still a million dollars over what we have in that with the new TID money in there. And it doesn't have to be like zero, like perfectly balanced like last year. But there's not more TIDs closing anytime soon. So yes, it's a million dollars over. There's not going to be more money. And I could see some of these things continue to increase in cost. So I know that there's a ton of great needs. And it's not that anything that's not in there isn't a great idea, and something that's a great project, they all are fantastic. We have limited money. And yes, we can add things without taking them off. However, where are you a million dollars in the hole? So take, think about it when you think about things that you might want to add, because a lot of things on there aren't going to happen as it is. So take a look at that. If you have any questions, you can ask me, you can ask Chad, you can ask Misty, lots of options for that. So go ahead and take a look at that. And that is all I have, and is second meeting. So District Two actually starts this time. Julia?
So I have a couple of things to mention. So one is the Courtyard Community Living Center project is coming along. They are raising the roof. And also, they have, for people that are interested about these, the services, they opened an office in 29 Eric Cahill, Maine, Suite 203. They are beside the Great Dane. So, and they're also doing some activities in that office. The next one is a Valentine branch on February 14 from 10 to 1:00 PM. So they are trying to help some meetings to, you know, to try to, to potential customers. So what else? The other, I know they're talking about business in District Two, Ollie's. When you go to the website, you say Ollie's Madison. That one is kind of frustrating. Ollie's Fitchburg, where Liliana used to be, is now open. They have happy hours of, or some hours from usually Tuesday to Saturday from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. So they are not open the entire day. But they are advertising fine cocktails. So if you want to, you know, support your local businesses, Ollie's open. What else? The other thing regarding, you mentioned already, Chad, the meeting for the open house and public meeting for the Stoner Prairie Park Master Plan. This is, you know, I forgot to mention that in my park. It's going to be Wednesday, February 8, from 6:30 to 8:30. So to, we are going to present, you know, the, how this park is going to look like. What else? One second. That's it.
All right. Gabriel?
Just one note I, I meant to mention in my TTC report was, we had a short discussion about electric bike proliferation, how they're becoming much more common, and these bikes can get up to 30 miles per hour. Plus, the, what do you call it? The bicycle bikes are mostly electric now. And just in terms of like designing roads and designing bike lanes, that, that's a new consideration that I don't think has been included in any of the previous planning. It's just something that hadn't come up before. And I just wanted to flag it for the council, since we have had a lot of extensive discussions about, about bike lanes and roads. So I thought it was an interesting point that we should probably have to revisit sometime in the future.
All right. Jay?
Just a couple of things. We, like, as was mentioned earlier, we do have the speed signs on Sine Road right now. The new ones are, apparently, they are in. It just requires some administrative work to actually get them requisitioned and paid for. So hopefully, those will be going up within the next couple of weeks. And also, on Thursday at 5:30, the police department is going to be having a community outreach discussion. That will be at the, one of the meeting rooms at the Lafayette Apartment Homes, starting at 5:30.
Shannon?
I have nothing.
All right, Jim?
Nothing to report.
Randy?
A couple of things. Next week, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, the Seminole Glen Stormwater Community Meeting will be held here in this, this room, chambers. And it's at 6:00 PM. And if you'd like to contribute your thoughts and concerns, please attend. And then I also want to give a shout out to Jenny and Jeff Funk, for those that are aware of it. Funk's closed unexpectedly, or unexpectedly to the neighborhood. And, but Jenny and Jeff were an important part of our community for 11 years, 12 years. And though they will not be operating Funk's, I understand that Kim and Kelly from the restaurant and bar will be opening up at least on Friday and Saturdays. And maybe the hours will increase from there. So, but big shout out to them. They're an important part of the community.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure most everybody's kind of saw the news about Little John's suspending their operations. I just want to give kudos to them for the work that they've, you know, really put in, in the community over the years, especially during the pandemic, the meals that they've been able to distribute. And, you know, how they've sort of really just kind of transformed the way we think about food and the use of food, food waste, and kind of leveling the playing field about who has access to food. I've, I've seen their, you know, places all over town, from the Children's Museum to different community centers, and, you know, just the ability that somebody can kind of come in and not have to worry about, you know, how much money they have in their pockets and eat is, you know, just incredibly revolutionary concept. And I have faith that they're going to continue to find a way to make their vision happen. But, you know, it's unfortunate that, that they had to suspend their operations. And just kind of thinking, thinking of them and, you know, hoping that other folks can just give them their flowers while they're still here.
Dave, go ahead.
It's, it's January, but I'm just going to mention, we're going to be starting to advertise for community garden spots again here in early February. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Tomorrow, that's all for reports. Announcements tomorrow is Community Hall. And then next council meeting is in three weeks. Get a bonus week in there. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Jay? Signed by Randy? All in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay? We are adjourned.